All right, where is Lydia? And we need Martin. Do we have Lydia and Martin? Martin. Good evening, I'd like to call the October 21st, 2014 City Council Meeting to Order. Would you all please rise and Mr. Dick Mayor, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join with me as we pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a great crowd, that's always good, we always love to see that. Thank you very much for coming, we've got a full agenda tonight. So, the first thing I'd like to do is, find my glasses. I'm getting to the point where I can't read anything without them. We're recognition of youth artists for Town Square Park Murals. I will go ahead and read, I would ask Terry, Terry Hickel, Terry, can you come over to the podium here? And I'm going to, and all of your artists, you have, how many artists do you have with you? All right, can we crowd them up here or should we wait till we're done? All right, all the artists, come on out. This is about Advancing Leadership 2.0, Advancing Leadership Youth, and the murals. And I've got something to read before we go any further. And why don't I go ahead and read the recognition?
Okay.
And then I've got a little story to tell and I'll turn it over to you. This is City of Federal Way Certificate of Appreciation Presented to Advancing Leadership Youth 2.0. In recognition and appreciation of the tremendous vision, collaboration, talent, and dedication displayed by the student artist of Advancing Leadership Youth 2.0, the murals at Town Square Park are truly a statement of intent that speaks to the purpose of the park and will serve to welcome all visitors to our very own Town Square Park, dated this 21st day of October 2014, signed by myself and all seven members of the City Council. And so, before I head on down there, Terry, would you please tell us a little bit about the mural project and how this all got started?
Yes, thank you Mayor Farrell and Council. It's just a real privilege to be here tonight and to be part of this project. You're going to hear a little bit more from the kids, but I just want to share with you, last Saturday I ended up walking in a benefit walk in Tacoma and met an ALY alum parent who I had never met before. And she said to me, "Oh my gosh, your program changed my son's life because you believed in him." And she said, "Sometimes that's all kids need, is someone to believe in them."
Yeah.
And so, I echo that to you, that your gift of giving us this project to figure out for this downtown park is your belief in all students in our city.
Thank you.
So, thank you all for trusting us, it's been quite a journey. I want to thank John Hutton, he was my city contact, he's a servant leader. He was amazing, he introduced me to Jason Gerwin. And we also met with the Parks and Arts Commission Chairs to get their blessing and also their advice. So, John was awesome. I also want to thank Sally McLean, Vince Blauzer, and Adam Koulas with the Federal Way School District, they were equally partners in this, they helped us translate words, they got us into Truman High School, we painted five days, five hours a day, we've been working on this, you know, for quite a while. And then Bob Henry couldn't be here tonight, he's our professional artist, he was a mentor and teacher to the kids, he taught them how to draw in scale, how to translate that to a large mural, and how to paint, because it's different to paint large than little. He was a mentor to me too, he would say, "Terry, good things take a little bit of time, so slow down." And he'd say, "Hey, you bought the wrong paintbrushes, let me do it, don't get those rollers, they leave lint." So, I'm not an artist, but I learned a lot from Bob and I hope he'll be there tomorrow. Sherwin-Williams donated 12 dozen cans of paint in school colors, so they were on the team. And also, I want to just thank the ALY 2.0 students for taking on this challenge, not all of them did, but a good chunk of them did. They took on this challenge since June until now, and then the student artists that you're going to meet in a minute. So, what I'd like to do before I introduce some of our students, I want to read a quote from an email that I got today from Al Grant, his daughter is one of the artists. And he said, "Thanks for the opportunity for Minji to show her talent and commitment to her new city and country." And I want to share with you that we are an international city, and that will be reflected in the art, you'll hear about that in a minute, and also that art speaks across all languages. So, it's been really fun.
And Terry, that, just to make sure that, for folks who may not fully know what we're talking about, we, once we opened Towns, where we're considering and we're working on Town Square Park, there was this huge, long wall that presented essentially a blank canvas with which to work on, to paint a tapestry if you will. And so, I happened to be, what month was that, June?
June, June.
It seems like a lot longer ago. And I just happened to be at the ALY meeting when they were doing their retreat and talking, and they were asking, "Well, you know, what would you have us do and, you know, what kinds of projects?" And I said, "You know, we got this big, blank, white wall, and I'm not sure what to put on it." And they have taken the ball and run with it, and I have to tell you, I am just so impressed. And so, can you tell us a little bit about what's going to occupy that space, what they've done?
Absolutely, let me introduce you to Mary Lou Paul. Mary Lou, come on up.
Hi, to everyone, I'm Mary Lou Paul, senior from Decatur High School and a member of ALY 2.0. We received this project from Mayor Farrell in one of our meetings, and as many of you have heard, he handed the project to us spontaneously, and we were at work right away. During the initial meeting, planning meeting, we wanted to make it a competition, but throughout the brainstorming process, we decided that it would be better if the youth worked together instead of working against each other. We focused on the different high schools in our city and recruited students who are motivated to be involved and have the passion for creativity. Our team decided on making the welcome, welcome the main point, and we decided to make, to write, wait, okay. We decided on making welcome the main point of the murals, written in many different languages to invite the diverse youth in our city. Seeing the artists work together to deliver the criteria we created was really amazing. The project, it didn't, it didn't feel like work, it was memorable, it was a memorable experience, and it was great to see everyone work together to enhance the new Town Square Park.
Great, thank you.
So, the students asked, they decided to use the word welcome as their main point of view, and Vince Blauzer with the Federal Way Public Schools got that word, welcome, translated in 131 languages.
Wow.
And we use those words on very, each of the panels has about 14 of those words on the panels.
Wow.
Now, I'd like to introduce to you Victoria Cacho, and she is in the ALY 1.0 class, we discovered that she was also an artist. We have two groups of kids, the ALY 2.0s and the artists, and Victoria happens to be in both. And she's going to share a little bit about the artistic process.
Hi, I'm Victoria Cacho, junior from Federal Way High School, and as you've heard, I was kind of in both groups, so I ended up being like the, what do you call it? The head artist of this whole project. And so, what we did with all of those words was, each high school had two panels, and those two panels were to be in the high school's colors. So, Federal Way got blue and white, Truman got green and white, et cetera, et cetera. And each of those panels had a certain amount of words of welcomes in the different languages of Federal Way on them. And so, as a Federal Way artist, I worked on my own Federal Way panel with blue and white, and so, go Eagles. I was really happy to work on this project because as an artist since birth, I, art has been my dream forever, and I'm sure many of the other artists who have been working with us have the same dream. So, this project is actually a perfect opportunity for us to like fill up our college portfolios and get our typography skills done, so thank you, commission, commission, City Council. Another thing I did as head artist, and all of the other artists helped also, was we worked on the background of each of the panels, and like I said, those were all different colors of the high school. And so, we did like this geometric design, so it would be simple but expressive of all of the different high school colors. Also, by, to recruit artists, since I was part of ALY during the planning process for this project, we recruited artists by basically going into our own schools and trying to find those artists. So, I'd like to commend like the people who actually were brave enough to go into the schools and look for artists, because it's kind of hard to find us, because we like to hide under rocks. And it was very fun and educational working on the panels, because there's a thing about multitasking, you can hold a paintbrush in one hand and a snack in the other, and I almost, I did this a lot, and so I almost would like dip my paintbrush in my snack, and so, I'm still alive, so. So, I had a lot of fun working on this project too, and I made a lot of new artist friends. And the hard part about painting these panels was actually like lifting them up, those things were about as heavy as three of us put all together, and so, it was actually surprising to see how much weight any of us tiny little girls could carry. So, we learned how to work together. And overall, this project is like one of the best art experiences I've had in my life, because I get to do it for my city, and it's such a great opportunity to work for my city, because I've been living here all my life, and I want, I want to see more art in Federal Way, so this was an awesome project.
So, I would like you to meet each of our artists and our ALY students, they're just going to say their name and their school. So, you want to go ahead and start over again, and then just circle around.
Yeah, I'm Victoria Cacho from Federal Way High School, and I'm a junior, and I was the head artist.
Circle again.
I'm Mary Lou Paul from Decatur High School. Can I say my name in your screen? Okay. My name is Maria Delmar Kowagden, I am also from Federal Way High School.
My name is Huyang Kim, and I'm from Todd Beamer High School.
My name is Minji Grant, I'm from Todd Beamer High School.
Hello, my name is Jisoo Jong, and I'm from Decatur High School.
My name is Erica Lee, and I'm from Thomas Jefferson High School.
My name is Elise Pehang, and I'm from Thomas Jefferson High School.
Hi, I'm Kristina Kim from Todd Beamer High School.
My name is Helen Song, I'm from Decatur High School, and I'm senior.
I'm Nadia Shibley, I'm a senior at Decatur High School, and I'm part of ALY 2.0.
My name is Lily, I'm from Todd Beamer, and I'm part of ALY 2.0.
My name is Jack Bull, and I am from Federal Way High School, and I'm part of ALY 2.0. And Advancing Leadership 2.0 formally invites the community to an Art in the Park unveiling tomorrow at 4:00 PM in the Town Square Park, followed by a short reception at Woodstone Credit Union. Please bring an umbrella, it'll be really raining.
Okay, now, don't go anywhere, you guys stay right there, we're going to do a group picture, and I'm going to bring this down, but great job, you guys. Stay right there. You know, Terry, who's very humble about all this, this is her last year in advancing leadership and advancing leadership youth, and while she says she's not an artist, the mosaic, her mosaic, her masterpiece, will be all the leaders that she has educated and put out into this community and beyond, and that truly, Terry, is your masterpiece.
Thank you.
Okay, so you guys, let's all come down, let's do a big group picture, let's do it in front.
Okay, you guys ready?
Come on down. Come on, come on you guys. Okay, now we're going to need some people behind us. I'll stop, I'll stop. All right, we got it. All right, thank you everybody.
Four o'clock tomorrow, rain or shine.
All right, we got it. All right, thank you everybody.
Four o'clock tomorrow, rain or shine.
All right, that's fun. All right, now, oh my gosh, Arts Alive, Item B, Arts Alive Presentation, Arts Commission, Arts Commission Staff, Cody Geddes. Hi Cody.
Hi, thank you guys, thank you guys for coming to the reception. I'm actually going to bring up Arts Commissioner Lori Weldon, she's going to make the presentation about Arts Alive.
Thank you Cody, and I'll give those to you. Thank you Mayor and City Council, I'm really happy to be here, our commander of our arts group is out watching a new grandbaby be born, so, so, he's not able to be here, but the Arts Alive Juryed Art Exhibition is a program designed to give regional artists an opportunity to display their work in a public setting here at City Hall, as you can, and when you leave, if you haven't seen it, you go down the hall and it's a curved wall behind this wall, and you'll see some beautiful art. This year, we had 15 different artists with 24 pieces of artwork, and they're now on display until January 7th. And until October 31st, the People's Choice Award can be voted on, there's a ballot box and you just fill it out, put it in, and there'll be one more award. But tonight, we have a couple, some of the artists are here, and if they'd like to stand, everybody who's here that, thank you. Thank you. But we have two of the awards are going to be given out tonight, one is the Commissioner's Choice Award, and it goes to Hiroko Seki.
Yeah.
And her, her painting was Blue Heron at Rest.
Oh yeah.
And the second award is the Judges' Choice Award, and Shibane, Shibane, I know I was going to get that wrong, Shibane Dumo, she did The Ghost of Recent Past. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you Lori, thanks Cody. And congratulations to our word winners. We had a lot of great art, so next time, if you have an opportunity, come walking down the hallway, you'd see it all of the, all of the entries, and it's just a great art. It's a lot of, it's a fun thing that we do, donating that, that wall space there, so congratulations again. We have proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, many of us are wearing the ribbons, and I forgot my, my pink jacket tonight, but next year.
I'm making up for both of us.
All right, thank you, thank you. And we have Councilmember DuKlo, well, first of all, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Councilmember DuKlo. And we also have a Federal Way Police Officer Stacy Eckert, Will Accept. So Stacy, come on up.
While Stacy's walking up, I'll read the proclamation, it says, "Whereas this year," first of all, this is, this is personal to me, because I had a cousin die of breast cancer, a very close cousin, so. "Whereas this year, more than 20, 230,000 women and 2,000 men will be diagnosed with breast cancer in America, and whereas, early detection of breast cancer increases treatment effectiveness and survival rates, and whereas, more Americans are surviving breast cancer than ever before, but there is more work to do, and whereas, awareness is crucial to further reducing the toll that breast cancer has on individuals and families, and whereas, all women and men should be familiar with the risk factors and symptoms of this disease and consult with their healthcare providers about appropriate screening, and now therefore, we the undersigned Mayor and City Council of Federal Way do hereby proclaim October 2014 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Federal Way. We encourage all residents and all other interested groups to join in activities that will increase early detection of breast cancer and expand awareness of what Americans do to prevent breast cancer. This is signed the 21st day of October 2014 by the Mayor and all members of the Council."
Thank you Mayor, thank you City Council, this is an honor, as I'm a police officer here, obviously, and I talk about this frequently, I was diagnosed at age 40 with breast cancer, and I had no symptoms, and a postcard literally saved my life. I went and got a mammogram after receiving the postcard, and I had a lot of cancer and had to have immediate surgery in January of 2011. So, this is not a large crowd, but I hope everyone spreads the word that early detection does save lives, and I'm actually back doing a very physically challenging career, and I feel blessed, and this is an honor, thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you Stacy. Thank you for your courage Stacy. All right, I skipped Item C, which is Certificate of Appointment Diversity Commission Presenting, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. At the October 7th City Council Meeting, the Council appointed Christine Lombard to the Diversity Commission. I know that she's not able to be here tonight, but I'll go ahead and read the Certificate of Appointment, and we will get that to her. Certificate of Appointment, in accordance with Ordinance 06-531, the City of Federal Way Mayor and City Council certifies Christine Lombard is hereby appointed to serve as a voting member of the Federal Way Diversity Commission for a term to expire May 31st of 2016, dated this 21st day of October 2014, signed by our Mayor and all seven Council Members. Thank you, she's already started her job, she's been to one meeting, so.
That's great, she's going to make a great addition. Thank you Councilmember Honda. All right, Item E, Valley Cities Human Services Agency Presentation, Clinical Services Director Daniel McDougall Trace, Tracy, is that individual present? Daniel McDougall Tracy? Maybe next meeting? All right, we'll, we'll have, we'll find out what happened there, and have a presentation at the next meeting by Valley Cities. Mayor's Emerging Issues, Ray Gross, our Emergency Manager, will come up. As he's making his way, I just want to say a few things, we've all heard about what's going on in, you know, West Africa with Ebola, and obviously just the few cases that we've had in the United States. I want to let you know, as your Mayor and the Council, we have protocols in place for infectious disease and for a contagion. One of the first things I did, probably several weeks ago, when this first really became much more of an issue, is I reached out to Ray and had him come to my office, and I wanted a full presentation on what our contagion protocol would be, what would trigger that protocol, and what would be expected of us through the Greater Emergency Operations Center, of which I am a member, and obviously would lead the city's response in regard to that issue. But as things, as this has kept in the media, and I think that there is a lot of obviously, obvious concern in our country and around, around the world about this, I've asked Ray to give us a detailed report about his activities, there's been a lot of activity going on, and I've asked Ray to give us a brief presentation. So, with that Ray, please, you're on.
Thank you Mayor, Councilmembers. Again, my name's Ray Gross, I'm the Emergency Manager for the city, and tonight I'm going to cover regional and greater Federal Way planning and activities in the next two slides, but I also wish to give you some Ebola background and some good news updates. So, the World Health Organization has declared the country of Nigeria Ebola-free, they had about 20 cases, eight of which of those cases passed on, but they've gone 42 days without any new cases, so they've been determined Ebola-free. Also, the first Ebola confirmation in the United States, the Thomas Duncan and the two nurses, they were determined to have up to 172 close and/or possible contacts, of those 60 have completed their 21-day medical surveillance and have been released, and there's still 112 remaining of those suspected contacts, and as the days progress, they're going to be probably released as well, Ebola-free, no symptoms, no confirmed cases, that sort of thing. There's a couple other good news items out there, the American video journalist has been determined to be Ebola-free, he was a confirmed case, but he's now Ebola-free, and he's going to probably be released tomorrow. And then the first nurse, who was a confirmed case, has been upgraded from fair to good, so there is some good news out there. Also, the Department of Homeland Security is going to do some upgrades to the travel regulations, anyone traveling from an Ebola, a known active Ebola country, will have to fly to one of those five designated airports, where they have set up screening procedures for that. So, that's some good news as well. And then lastly, there are no confirmed or suspected cases of Ebola in King County at this time. So, on the regional planning activities list, Public Health, Seattle, King County, is the lead agency for any type of infectious disease event, and they've been doing an excellent job of sharing information, holding meetings, and providing guidance, either from the CDC or ALI, plan to do things here locally. There's a couple of things I'd like to inform you about here in King County, Harborview has agreed to be a reception hospital, so it is possible, if Harborview agrees to receive confirmed Ebola patients, they, they're set up for that. Also, King County Medic One has designated a Ebola transport vehicle, it's been refurbished and it's now ready and waiting for its potential use, they've completely sanitized the inside of it and kind of put an Armor All coating on the inside, which would help with the decontamination of that. And then here in South King County, Kent Fire and South King Fire and Rescue are dedicated, designated decon teams for that vehicle. Then lastly, Public Health has stated that they would do some aggressive medical monitoring if we had confirmed cases here in King County, and that would involve meeting with those confirmed cases on a two, twice a day basis. If we had a suspected case of Ebola, the lab potential turnaround time at the minimum would be six hours, that would be best case scenario, but most likely, within 24 hours, we would know if a suspected case was confirmed or not. Okay? And then lastly, ValleyCom, our 911 dispatch center here in King County, or South King County, has designated protocols to where if they get a call for medical assistance, they're to enact some screening to that, to determine if these flu-like symptoms, if that's what the medical call's involving, to do some screening of that, to where they can inform first responders that this is a potential case of Ebola, and that way, it better protects our first responders. And that overall is the primary goal and focus of what we're doing here in King County, is keeping our communities informed, educated, and ultimately protected from this potential infectious disease. Here in the greater Federal Way, if you notice a theme, information sharing is paramount right now, and all that is trying to address the potential public perception, panic, and other things out there, rumor control, so we're doing- So, we're doing internal information sharing as well as external. That's one of our driving goals right now. Supplies for the Greater Federal Way Emergency Operations Center has been reviewed, and we're looking at updating some of that. Most of those supplies were purchased during the pandemic flu, avian flu, swine flu events. So, some of the areas we've identified are more hardier materials, because it's more dealing with the cleaning up of potential bodily waste, as well as increasing our supplies so our continuity of operations can continue, that including food and water. We're now bumping it up from three days to seven days. Some trainings that we've conducted or attended. The Human Resources Department provided bloodborne pathogen training for a lot of our city staff. Plan on doing several community presentations, as well as presentations internally, to just ensure our workers and community are informed as to what's going on, what's being done about it, and what they can do to better prepare themselves. We have done a plan review and update, as the mayor stated. I sat down with him, and we went through our current bioagent response plan. We identified some areas we need to address, as well as continually to update them as we learn more and more about the potential Ebola outbreak. Two things I do want to address is the assumptions that emergency management's currently working under, and these would also be trigger points, and then I would like to address some challenges. So, the assumptions, we're kind of focused on four assumptions. One being, if we get a known case of Ebola coming into Harborview. So, we're notified that we have a known confirmed case of Ebola coming in through CTAC to Harborview. That's where that transport vehicle would come into play. The system's very much already geared, already been exercised, to handle that assumption, that trigger point. But if we were to get that, we would definitely have to engage the media and our community to just put some concerns and fears to rest. Second assumption would be a person coming through CTAC, and through the CTAC screening process, they trigger the screening process that they have a suspected case of Ebola. The two major parts of that screening is, they've traveled to a known area that is currently having an Ebola outbreak, and then they have a fever and other symptoms. That would be the second trigger point, second assumption, but very much like the first one, the system is set up to where we can isolate and contain that, and then transport them to Harborview. The third assumption and trigger point that we're planning for is in the event that we get someone into King County who was at a country with Ebola, they were not symptomatic going through the airliner transport, but somewhere, once they went to their residence, sometime in that timeframe, they self-report in with symptoms of potential Ebola. And they are triggered, as well as traveling to a country. That would be the third assumption, the third trigger point, and that one would probably be the most labor-intensive, only because they have made various contacts, and we'd have to do contact tracing, which is very logistically demanding. The last assumption that we're kind of planning for would be if we get a cluster of Ebola, suspected Ebola patients, or confirmed suspected, confirmed Ebola cases in a cluster. So, we just have 20 cases automatic just kind of pop up. That would probably be the worst case, and we'd, we'd have to look at the potential of intentional infection in that scenario. That would be the worst-case scenario in that event. So, those are the four assumptions, four trigger points that would, would activate us into supporting public health. Okay? Some of the challenges that we've encountered, both watching Dallas, as well as brainstorming we've done, one is continuing to protect our first responders and our healthcare workers. They are the core identified risk group. Then, management of rumors, panic, false alarms. Unfortunately, the symptoms of Ebola, very similar to the flu, and we're coming into the flu symptom, flu season, so we're kind of expecting some irrational false alarms in that arena. Contact tracing would be, again, logistically difficult. And then, waste management. In the event that we have confirmed Ebola cases, just handling all the infectious waste from that. There's, there's various regulations involved in that, that we work our way through. So, with that, I've concluded my presentation as to what we are doing locally, as well as engaging on a regional basis, kind of giving you some national updates, and I'm ready to take questions or comments.
Well, I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, while the chance of Ebola, you know, widespread outbreak, at least from what we're told right now, is fairly remote, you know, we have had, you know, a lot of concern in previous years by H1N1, the avian flu, you know, so this, this protocol, and I think I wanted to make sure that we addressed this, is that addresses all of those kind of contagions. Would you agree with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Dugl.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. That was a very good presentation, and I've been following this very closely. The one thing I want to say to people out in the, in the audience and at home, get your flu shot, because this Ebola manifests itself much like the flu early on, and that's why people don't go for help. So, if you get your flu shot, you should be immune to the flu, and then if you come down with symptoms, you know you need to really follow up. Hopefully, it won't get up here and will contain it where it is, and eventually wipe it out across the world, but.
Right.
Get your flu shots.
Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. I think it probably sets a lot of people's minds at ease. Just a quick question, though. If something were to occur here, at what point do you contact the CDC, or is that our role? How does that, how's that handled?
Well, when a suspected or confirmed case happens, King County Public Health, Seattle would, would deal with the State Department of Health, as well as the CDC. And they would also begin the contact tracing of any and all people involved with that suspected case. You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor Burbridge.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Ray. It was very thorough, and I appreciate it. I just would comment also that this presentation, to me, points up the value and importance of the collaboration that occurs between the city, South King Fire and Rescue, Valley Communications, and certainly our, our Public Health Department. So, again, it's, it points up the importance and the value of each of those roles and working together.
Thank you. Well said, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember, councilmembers, any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Well done, Ray.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I started getting a couple of emails that were questioning whether, what kind of response we had in place, so I wanted to make sure that Ray was able to provide that information. We've got our next, I believe, our fifth Neighborhood Connection meeting this week, this Thursday, at Wildwood Elementary, just north of Steel Lake. I'd love to have, we'd all love to have you there. This is really another opportunity where City Hall is actually, not literally, but figuratively, coming to a neighborhood near you. We bring our department directors, the council members, and that we take, the most important part of the meeting is to take questions from the, from the public. And we'd love to have you there, 6:00 PM this Thursday. What date would that make it? The 23rd? Okay, all day. October 23rd, 6:00 PM at Wildwood Elementary, so I hope you can make it. Veterans Day event. John Hutton. This is on November 11th at 11:00 AM, so 11:11:11. Maybe Johnny can explain to us the significance of that, and what, what we have planned for that special day.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell. Again, this has been a tremendous honor to be selected as lead from the city staff, to lead such a prestigious event, such an important event, and such a historical event. 11:11 on November 11 was the time of the armistice of the Great War. So, this is very important to me personally, and I've taken great interest in doing that. I've had great help from several people in the community, Bob Kellogg, Councilmember Selsky, many, many others throughout the community are helping. We have some very high-profile local veterans that will be speaking that day. We're proud to announce that Todd Beamer High School Band will be playing. We also have a bagpiper, and we have the Todd Beamer ROTC that will be doing a wonderful presentation, very powerful, on MIAPOW. That is a seven-minute presentation, and my understanding is, it's incredibly moving. So, we're very excited. We want everybody to be there. It's gonna be great. We've ordered up good weather. I'm hoping that happens. I'm a lot bolder in summer events.
But we ordered a tent. But we ordered a tent, too.
We've ordered a tent to protect us from the weather, so come early, and it'll be a great, great event. The flag raising, it's a three-part, three-pronged event, with the flag raising, the veteran's ceremony, and the renaming of 320th Street to Veterans Way, which is a pretty powerful statement about the city's value of our veterans, so. And a quick personal aside, my dad was at Omaha Beach, Normandy, on D-Day, so, and all three of my brothers served in Vietnam, so it's a very powerful thing for me personally, and I'm, again, quite an honor, so. I'm happy to answer any questions, Councilman.
Well, John, I knew you'd be the perfect person to handle this, and we're, we're getting the word out to the public, and it's going to be a really kind of a special, a special deal. The flag, it's a 60-foot flagpole. The flag's gonna be 12 feet by 18 feet. Many people may have seen the island that's in the middle of 320th, that has now grass on it. So, a couple of things. Bob Kellogg, I want to acknowledge, Bob, can you raise your hand? Bob Kellogg, this was his brainchild about doing this, and we are so excited. And it really, when he came to, to meet me in my office and talk about this, it wasn't until he talked about this, not only the 60-foot flagpole, you know, right, you know, right on this island, and obviously protected by 10 feet of a barrier in either way, to make sure it's not a danger to traffic, but it wasn't until I heard him say, we're gonna rename, or the idea to rename something to do with veterans on 320th, but it was all the 30, there was all these other flags that would be on the light poles, all the way leading from, essentially from the freeway down to 11th, where the Safeway is. And all of a sudden, I saw it, and I, and he had actually had somewhat of a rendering where I could kind of get a picture of it. And it really is, I think it's going to really redefine the look and feel of our downtown. And this is something that, once it goes up, is gonna be a permanent part of our community. So, to Bob Kellogg, I say thank you. And because of that, Bob's gonna go out to the island, after we get done, during the ceremony, where Bob's gonna go out to the island with me, along with King County Councilman Pete Von Reichbauer, and we're gonna see if we can get that flag up for the very first time, or we are gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna rise to our national anthem. I do want to say also, our councilmember, Bob Selsky, is a veteran, a graduate of West Point Military Academy, and was, served with distinction with the United States Army for many years. So, we're gonna have him speak, and, and, Councilmember Selsky, who are you gonna introduce?
So, I'm gonna introduce to be the speaker, a high school classmate of mine from Federal Way High School, and very, very dear friend of mine, Rich Garmong, who is a 27-year veteran of the Army, and also of the Coast Guard, actually, and also served in Iraq as a senior non-commission officer. So, I'm real proud of him, and I'm looking forward to some really great comments from Rich.
That's great. Thank you. And King County Councilman Pete Von Reichbauer is going to speak as well, and he's a veteran, and served for many years as well. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I, just to let the public know, will 320th be closed during the event?
It's a good question.
Thank you.
During the regular event, during speed, we're not gonna close 320th for the whole event. So, when, we're gonna be in the Sears parking lot, just, just south of where that island, where that flagpole is gonna be. So, the event starts at 11:00. So, I'd say from 11:00 to about 11:30, 11:35, 320th is gonna remain open, probably one lane either way, I would imagine. And then, when, once myself and Bob and Pete Von Reichbauer get ready to go raise a flag, and we're gonna, we're gonna shut off traffic from Pacific Highway to 20th, and shut that off, because we, we don't want, actually, people, you know, inadvertently driving through this ceremony. So, we're gonna shut it off, and during the time that we're raising the flag and playing the national anthem. And that should just take a few, we're anticipating between five and seven minutes. And then, we'll probably have to take a couple pictures, walk back, and then the ceremony will just, we'll, we've probably got one or two things left after that. And then, I want to remind everybody that we also have another Veterans Day, the main Veterans Day event, at 1:00 PM at Beamer, is that right?
Correct.
Todd Beamer High School?
That is correct.
And so, I want to invite, make sure everybody's there, and acknowledge, and that we get everybody at that event as well. And I believe the Todd Beamer High School Band is gonna be there for that.
That is correct.
Okay, one last thing about this. At 9:00 PM, just in case you're curious, at 9:00 PM tomorrow, that would be Wednesday at 9:00 PM, that flagpole's gonna go into the ground. So, I'm gonna be there with my hard hat and a vest with Marwan. If anybody would like to come out, watch this thing get put into the ground, because once it comes in, or once it goes in, it's, it's not coming out, so. We're also gonna have, we're gonna have time-lapse photography, because we're gonna put this on Channel 21, and, and kind of celebrate that. So, anything else, John?
Perfect evening plans for you tomorrow. Come to the unveiling of the art at Town Square at 4:00. Grab a bite to eat, go watch the flagpole go up. Be a perfect evening.
All right. But the flag's not going up that night.
No, just the flagpole.
The flag's going up on the 11th, and then the, but the street signs, the Veterans Way signs are start, you're gonna start seeing them the Friday before, so November 7th, but that's not an event. Council, any other questions? I think I've fully explored this one. All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right. We, as many of you know, we have moved, decided to make the decision to move forward with the Performing Arts and Conference Center. We have, we have a new team in place in regard to the PAC Project. The PAC Project Director will now be Will Appleton, with, and the project team members that meet every Monday from 8:30 AM to 10:00 AM to discuss the PAC, our Marwan Saluma Public Works, Tim Johnson, our new Economic Development Director for Grants and Naming Rights, Finance will be our Finance Director, Adaya Ralou, Legal will be our City Attorney, Amy Jo, Pierceall, FUD, HUD and funding, HUD Funding and Requirements, not FUD. Man. Okay.
Would you like to try again?
Yeah, try, take two. Jeff Watson, Facilities and Logistics, Steve Iker, John Hutton, and PAC Director. We just started this week with a national search for the individual that would be the Director of the Performing Arts and Conference Center, and my representative on this working group will be Brian Wilson. And I don't know who's representing FUD. So, yet to be named. Okay, you know, we've got our budget, and the next time we discuss the budget, it will be, we've got a special council meeting on October 29th, a week from tomorrow. We'll be discussing departments, the Police Department, Law Department, Municipal Court, that's at 6:00 PM in this room. After that, we'll be on November 4th for a special meeting at 6:00 PM. Department presentation will be the mayor's office, City Council, HR, Information Technology, City Clerk's Office, Community Development Department, and then we'll have deliberations. Also, that night, the regular meeting at 7:00 PM, we'll have the public hearing, the first on the, as required by law, on the 2015-16 biennial budget and the property tax. Two weeks later, on November 18th, special City Council meeting, 6:00 PM, if necessary for deliberations. At the 7:00 PM meeting, we'll have a continuation of our public hearing for the budget. And on December 2nd, regular City Council meeting at 7:00 PM, we will be seeking authorization for enactment of the 15-16 biennial budget, property tax rate, and, and all of that material. So, that's our schedule. And recall, if you will, our Brook Lake painting that we had framed, if you get a chance, we finally put some glass on it. We actually got some nice light acrylic, but that's the painting that we got out of the very historic Brook Lake Community Center. We had a great event at the Historical Center on Saturday, in which we were talking about. We not only heard a presentation about the, the rich and long history of that historic building where Federal Way began, literally, but we also have, I gave a presentation, a brief comments about the future of that site, about using it for an interpretive and learning center, and perhaps even as an entryway to the historic Hilebus Wetland. So, when you get an opportunity, we're going to eventually put a plaque there denoting the history, because we did find out who the actual painter was, and, and his individual astonishing story when he moved to the Northwest 114 years ago. So, very cool stuff, really, and so, it's truly an artifact of Federal Way history, and, and we wanted to make sure we got some protection on that, on that painting. Okay, with that being said, we're now at the most important part of the evening, which is the Citizen Comment. Our first up is Tim Burns. On deck will be Bob Kellogg and Karen Russell after that. will be Bob Kellogg and Karen Russell after that. And then Battery Bob and then John Sekounis. Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Burbage, and City Council Members. I'm here tonight to speak in regard to Item 7 on the agenda, the ordinances prohibiting marijuana-related businesses and extending the moratorium on marijuana, medical marijuana. As you're all aware, the citizens of the State of Washington and your constituents in Federalway approved Initiative 502, thereby stating that they wanted recreational marijuana to be available. In the, in the City of Federalway, there are, at least in the initiative, which is now law, there are regulations, there are restrictions on where it can be grown, produced, and retailed. And they should be sufficient within the City of Federalway to allow for retail sales. I'm especially concerned about the medical marijuana portion of it in that we have people in the City of Federalway that have prescriptions for medical marijuana and are now having to travel outside, if they can get to a dispensary, to get their legally allowed prescriptions filled. You're doing a disservice to the citizens of Federalway if you require them to leave Federalway to obtain their, their product. I believe that Councilman Selzky was quoted in the paper as saying he was concerned about the effect it would have on youth, the drivers, and the image of Federalway. You don't believe that marijuana is already available?
Tim, please, please direct your comments to the entire council.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
I'm not a user. I don't anticipate being a user. But I voted for 502 for two specific reasons. One, I wanted to eliminate the criminal element. And two, I wanted to make sure that there was, the, the product was regulated and safe. And I think that you are promoting the illegal trafficking of marijuana by refusing to allow the retail sales in the City of Federalway. So, I urge you not to extend the moratorium and not to ban recreational marijuana in the City of Federalway. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Tim. All right, next, Bob Kellogg. And after that, Karen Russell. Sir?
Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbage, and Council. I, again, thank you for adopting this, this idea for veterans. I think it's a marvelous event. John Hutton and I did have a discussion about it, and he mentioned his dad was at Omaha Beach. So was one of my older cousins. And the reason I have been involved in this for all these years is I wanted to honor both my uncles and cousins that went off to war at the tender ages of 18 and essentially lost their youth in the process. They, they were in combat. The other reason, and I was thinking, sitting there thinking about, why did I get involved in this? And I'm gonna mention a name any of you will not remember, is Fred Pepper. Fred Pepper came back from Vietnam and he was very much affected from war. And in fact, it was one of the reasons why I got Kwanzaa involved, as he was a member back then, putting up the flag, the flagpole at Celebration Park. Again, I'm excited about this event. I'm looking forward to it. And I will be there Wednesday night.
Thank you, Bob. Fred was a friend of mine and he walked all the way across this country with a flag.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, sir. All right. All right, Karen Russell. I see you have some friends there?
I have some friends with me.
Come on down.
Thank you. Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbage, and Council Members. I'm Karen Russell, the Area Manager for Federalway and Auburn Public Health Centers. And with me tonight are Kathy and Jennifer, representing the staff of Federalway Public Health. We want to thank you again, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbage, Councilmember Maloney, Chris, and Jeff from the staff for coming to, I hope I didn't miss anybody, for coming to Federalway Public Health last Friday for our press event. It was our honor to host you all at our clinic, along with King County Executive Dow Constantine, King County Councilmember Pete Von Reichbauer, and our Public Health Director Patty Hayes, to celebrate that our Federalway Public Health Clinic will remain open to serve our clients and our community. And there was a lovely article in today's Federalway Mirror that you might want to look at with a nice summary of that event and some lovely pictures. So, thank you very much. We just heard from our young Federalway artists about what a difference it makes when you believe in people and, and how it encourages them to succeed. At our clinic celebration, we heard from one of our public health clients. She told a story about what a difference it had made in her life and her baby daughter's life when we had public health staff who helped them and believed in them. So, we just want to thank you again for your leadership and support and for believing in us and the work that we do in public health for our clients and our communities. Everybody at our clinic was saying how we really feel like we've grown to be family and the partnership with the city. And in fact, we have many of our sister clinics that are very jealous of us and the partnership that we formed. So, we're encouraging them in that way. For those of you who weren't able to attend, we'd love to have you come back sometime, take a tour. And we have some thank you cards signed by our staff that we would like to present to you, if we may.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. So, I'd just like to say, thank you so much. And I, you know, I am so proud of this council. I, I have to tell you, you know, we, this council stood unanimously and stood up and supported the $221,000. And so, you know, thank you very much. And Councilmember Duclair?
I just want to also say, thank you for your leadership on this and to the council and to you folks. And, you know, we were highlighted at the RPC meeting about stepping up to the plate. And at the PIC, that was much before the RPC meeting, they wanted to know what we're doing. At that time, I couldn't tell them we were paying money, but I said we were working on it. And the next day, I had an email from people saying, well, now we know why you couldn't say exactly what. But they were very, very proud of our city for stepping up that way.
Yeah. Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you. I, I am proud of us for this and I am proud of our community. But I'm just so thankful that the staff stepped up as well and they took a pay cut.
Yeah.
And that says so much about your commitment to your clients and to this community. I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And remember when we were leaving the event, you guys, and, you know, and we had, we were in that nice holding room where it had kind of the high ceiling. But then we walked through the general waiting area and there were dozens and dozens of people waiting to be served and helped. And I thought, my God, what if this had actually closed? And, and what, you know, all the, the real-life consequences that would have flowed from that, the population of which would equal the entire population of Lake Forest Park, for, near almost 14,000 people. And so, great work, you guys, on behalf of everybody. That's great.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, please. Okay, I'll send these each way. And then, when they come back, we'll, we'll switch them. Okay, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Battery Bob.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Battery Bob and I'm the Executive Director of the Unique Company in Federalway. On October 1st, I received an invitation from the White House, from President Obama, asking me to participate in My Brothers Keeper Community Program, and to which I agreed to do that. And I sent this reply. It says, "I just took the My Brothers Keeper Community Challenge. The MBK Community Challenge seeks to inspire community leaders and encourage their commitment to ensuring all young people can succeed." And it says, "Will you join me? I'm Battery Bob and I jumpstart people's lives with hope." Today, I received a follow-up letter regarding this. And this is the, what the letter says. "Thank you for taking the first step in the My Brothers Keepers Community Challenge. The MBK Community Challenge encourages communities, cities, counties, tribal, tribal nations to develop and execute a coherent cradle-to-college and career strategy to improve life outcomes for all young people, consistent with the goals and recommendations of the MBK Federal Task Force, May 28th, 2014. Report to ensure that they can reach their full potential regardless of who they are, where they came from, or the circumstances in which they are born. When communities accept the president's challenge, communities are committed to convene key stakeholders to get involved locally to implement proven strategies for improving the life outcomes of young people, to measure their successes and setbacks, and to share their plans publicly to help communities learn from one another and spread the word." And this final paragraph, it says, "As a community ally, we want to help you connect to activities happening in your area. At this time, your city, Federalway, has not accepted the challenge, but can do so by visiting the MBKchallenge.org. The White House will continue to keep you up to date on the developing, national development of MBK. And in response to this, I have, I have here a letter that I can help the City of Federalway eliminate poverty that we have in response to President Obama's remarks." So, I have a card for...
Very good. Actually, if you could hand it to our city clerk. Thank you, Bob.
I've just done time.
Good job. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
All right. John Sekounis.
Hi, I'm John Sekounis. I've been chosen by the state as their number-one candidate to open up a recreational marijuana store in the City of Federalway. By allowing a store, recreational store in Federalway, he would be keeping everybody in Federalway that goes somewhere else spending their money in Federalway. And they do spend a lot of money. Everything he said was true. I mean, there's thousands of people that use recreational marijuana. And the medicinal also would go there because they wouldn't have to travel. The store would create jobs and it create a tremendous amount of revenue for the city to spend on other projects such as, I've heard about them talking about all night long, which would be, would be great assets to the city. Stores are state, they're very carefully state-run, basically, basically like a liquor store where they regulate absolutely everything that goes in and out of there. In November 2012, State of Washington voted 56% to have state stores or recreational stores, opposed to the 44% not. Federalway was 53 to 47% of the voters in Federalway. So, why have the vote if we're not gonna do it? As of September 7th, from September 17th to July 8th, they opened 32 stores and they produced $3.5 million in sales tax revenue, tax revenue. I don't know if it was sales tax, but combined taxes. Quarterly, the state takes $1.43 million per quarter to run their end. 55% after that goes towards healthcare. Another 25% after that goes toward education and drug treatment. The other portion, which they don't mention, me talking to the people of the state, her name's Becky, she runs the DL Liquor Control Board, is to produce kind of a task force, a portion of that. So, any illegal buying and selling of drugs to, let's say, teens and this and that, they will prosecute them and they will go after them vigorously, which is a good thing, because you'd have to be more than 21 to attend one of these stores. So, basically boils down to, what I'm saying is, it'd probably be a good thing for that. It's a nice, clean business. There'd be no riffraff because they wouldn't be able to afford to go in there, because the prices are a lot higher than that. And you'd keep your money in Federalway. I produced packets of information. I just highlighted some stuff that I'd love to give to her and she can hand out to you guys for review after I leave.
That'd be great. Yeah, absolutely.
And that's what I have to say.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right. And then Cheryl Nevers. After Cheryl, I don't have any further comments after, or comment sheets. So, if anybody wishes to provide comment, please fill out a pink sheet. Evening, Cheryl.
I'm Cheryl Nevers and I have been a homeowner in Federalway for 40 years. And I stand before you, and angry, beaten, and I had said, very sad old woman, but my friend Mac objects to that. So, I'll call myself the great-grandmother that I am. I've lived with drug abuse in my immediate family for many, many years. Where did it start? It started with marijuana. Don't let anyone tell you that pot is not a gateway drug, because it is. I can't imagine even debating this subject. I don't care what has been voted. I'm here to offer that the Planning Commission got it right. Federalway does not need to give their stamp of approval to allow pot shops around town. Don't we have enough drug abuse in Federalway? Look around. Why give our youth the idea that it's all right to use drugs? Why give them that idea by opening pot shops? If greed is your reason and everything is usually traced back to money, I would argue that the health and safety of the city's citizens is far more important than any tax revenue you would glean for any project. Pot smoking has been proven to kill brain cells. It makes people lazy. Yes, they get happy, some of them. But do you want a bunch of brain-dead laughing young people laying around eating candy bars, not going on to higher education? Not enough gumption to look for a job, dreaming of the next drug they will try? Those that would tell you pot is not dangerous say so because they need to justify their own use of it. I see enough of that in my neighborhood. Now, in fact, it is so riddled with seedy-looking drug abusers and drug pushers, one wonders, is this our future? Is this what our city, our state, our nation has become? I ask you, why would or should Federalway play into that scenario? Please let everyone know, this is a city which does not tolerate any activity that revolves around the drug scene. Insist Federalway be a cut above. Just think of all the deaths that alcohol use has caused on our highways. Pot smokers drive, too. Do you want a sanction issued to add to the problem? Problems you never dreamt of have been caused by the ridiculous legalization of this drug in Washington, Colorado. Read the papers. Trust me, there will be more problems as time goes on. What I've experienced in my home is just a modicum of what goes on or what will happen if Federalway does sanction them. Our police can't, they can't adequately police the drug problem now. If they were, there would not be so methamphetamine labs, so many of those around, and there would not be drug pushers out there pushing drugs to your children and grandchildren. There would not be so many burglaries and robberies where you lose your family heirlooms for a shot in the arm. Focus your attention on bringing new business to the city, shutting down all the meth labs, jailing all the heroin pushers. Would you be proud to show prospective new business clients your pot shops? Let's give everybody reason to stand up and say, no, not in my town.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay. That's all for Citizen Comment. Number five, Consent Agenda. We've got the minutes for the October 7, 2014 Regular and Special Meeting. Item B, Nautilus, 2014, NTS, South 304th Place. That's First Avenue South to Fourth Avenue South. Item C, Demolition of Structure at 28866 Pacific Highway South, Project Acceptance. Item D, 2015 Pedestrian Safety Program Authorization to Bid. Item E, South 320th Street, Provision of Honorary Name of Veterans Way. Item F, Purchase Two New Honda Police Motorcycles. Item G, Washington Traffic Safety Committee... Item G, Washington Traffic Safety Commission, WTSC, Grant for Impaired Driving, Seatbelt and Distracted Driving Enforcement. Item H, in a local agreement with King County for use of electronic fingerprint equipment provided by the Regional AFIS Program. And item I, T-Mobile Site Lease Renewal at Lakota Park. These items have already gone through committee and received approval through their committee, and they can all be passed in unison by one vote. Deputy Mayor Burbridge, do you have such a motion?
I do, thank you very much. I move approval of Items A through I on the consent agenda.
Second.
Right, it's been moved in second. Is there any, councilors, any discussion or items that anyone would want pulled off of this list? That being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The matter's pass. All right? That means we're going to have a new Veterans Way. It'll be honorary, but that's part of the package, so. All right, Council Business, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee reappointments. Deputy Mayor Burbridge.
Thank you very much. I will have a motion to approve, to reappoint some folks to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. This is a group of folks who dedicate themselves to monthly meetings and review issues related to the accumulation and distribution of the lodging tax, the 1 percent tax on hotel stays within our city. So at this point, I move to reappoint Jenny Vasquez, Joanne Paquette, and Rose Eel to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for two-year terms expiring October 31, 2016.
I'll second.
Right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And the record to reflect that... All right. Is it possible for her to cast a vote after she comes back, or is that just a missed vote? Okay. All right. All right, thank you very much. All right, now, moving on to Item 7, ordinances. This is first reading enactment. Council Bill Number 657, ordinance prohibiting marijuana-related businesses. Ask for a brief presentation by Associate Planner Stacy Welch.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbridge, and members of the council. By way of brief background, I-502 was passed by Washington voters in November of 2012. And in 2013, the council enacted a moratorium on marijuana-related businesses and directed staff to begin working on recommended regulations to address, among other things, licensing, health and safety, appropriate zoning, and compliance with the law. The current moratorium will expire on November 5. Other jurisdictions have taken a variety of actions related to I-502 implementation, including enacting moratoriums, adopting zoning regulations to allow the use, while others have chosen to ban the use altogether. Bans have been legally challenged, and most recently, FIFES ban was upheld by a Pierce County Superior Court Judge, but that will likely be appealed. So for preliminary staff recommendations, staff initially examined I-502 and the Washington State Liquor Control Board regulations pertaining to recreational marijuana retail, processing, and production, and reviewed the separation requirements from sensitive uses such as schools to formulate some draft zoning regulations. We presented those draft regulations to Planning Commission in a study session format, and at that time, the commission directed staff to proceed with development of detailed regulations in accordance with recommendations of staff for the citing of marijuana-related businesses. As part of that, staff proposed allowing marijuana uses in the BC and CE zones, also establishing additional operational guidelines, as well as incorporating the separation standards of I-502 from those sensitive uses. So at their September 17 public hearing, the commission voted to recommend the city council ban marijuana-related businesses in the city. After that, at their October 6 meeting, the LUTC voted to forward the proposed ordinance to ban to first reading and enactment by the city council, and first reading and enactment is specified due to the upcoming expiration of the moratorium. At that time, the LUTC also directed staff to extend the moratorium on medical marijuana and remand that component back to the Planning Commission, and there is a separate ordinance on tonight's agenda to deal with that matter. So staff is requesting suspension of a council rule in order to allow first reading and enactment at the same meeting, again, due to that pending expiration of the moratorium. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you have.
All right. Councilmember Rosowski.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, and thank you for that presentation. So I'm sure each of us here could talk about this topic for a very, very long time, but I'm going to limit my comments to just a few areas: stewardship, safety, and practicality. So going back a few years, I was concerned, actually way back then, about the sales of marijuana in Federal Way. This occurred in 2011, when the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs took a stand opposing Initiative 502, the legalization of marijuana, citing it as a harmful drug and the negative impact it would have on public safety. And really, the opinion of this association of experts speaks volumes to me. And as the paper stated, and as Mr. Burns mentioned tonight, two of my biggest concerns about selling marijuana in Federal Way are how much of it will wind up in the hands of our youths, and how much of it will wind up in the blood of DUI vehicle drivers. But really, these two concerns are dwarfed by the thought of having marijuana edibles available over the counter at retail sales in our city. How can edibles possibly be controlled? And products like marijuana candy or pastries be kept away from children? Not long ago, a New York Times columnist visited Colorado, where, of course, marijuana is legal, ate marijuana candy, and wrote in the New York Times that it left her in an eight-hour hallucinatory state. Imagine what this product can do to kids. And just today, I saw a report on CBS News where the Colorado Health Department is doing a backtracking now and recommending ceasing of all edible marijuana in the state because of its danger to children. So my wife Sue and I raised three sons right here in Federal Way. And like most parents, we were ever vigilant about our sons getting into marijuana. In those days, I know it was available, but it wasn't available legally, and it wasn't available as I assume it will be in the quantities it will with sales right here in our city. I'm really concerned about caring parents whose kids will be overwhelmed with the availability of marijuana sold within a five-minute drive from their homes, and it will wind up in their hands, in my opinion, much easier than ever before. So lastly, my wife brought this to my attention. You know, we in Federal Way, we're really trying hard to establish a positive identity and a positive image. And we've made great strides with the vision of a wonderful downtown, of course, which we have to make happen yet, the Performing Arts and Conference Center, great parks, a caring community, and so on. So with these efforts, I ask, why would we want to become known as the place where one can come and freely purchase marijuana? I believe that open sales of marijuana is not enhancing to the image that we want to project right here in Federal Way. So in summary, to me, the best decision for our city is to ban production, processing, and sales, and remain totally out of the marijuana business. There really just is too much at stake. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosowski. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I, too, have concerns about marijuana sales in the city of Federal Way, but I don't have enough information, I feel like, that I can make a decision tonight, and I would like to suggest that we extend the moratorium for another six months so that we can hear from the public, which we have yet to hear from very many public members. The Planning Commission, I've talked to a few of the planning commissioners, and they still seem a little surprised at the decision that they made. I respect what they did, and I respect the work that our planning commission does, but I feel as a city council member, I'd like to hear more from our public, and I'd like to extend the moratorium for another six months.
Is that, are you making a motion?
May I make the motion now?
Of course.
So I move to extend the moratorium on marijuana, collective gardens, and other related activities involved in the sale, manufacturing, and distribution of marijuana for six months.
And I'd like to second that, and I'd like to speak to it, if I may.
All right. Councilmember Duclon, then Councilmember Maloney.
Okay. First of all, I will, I support the motion, because I have not had the opportunity to get a lot of information on this, and I haven't had the chance to ask questions about it. I know people have strong feelings on both sides. I'm open-minded, I want to learn more, and I think the council deserves the time to have experts on both sides come and talk to us. I know the planning commission had some meetings and got some information, but this council as a whole, who has to make this decision, has not had that opportunity. In addition, 53 percent of our voters voted to make marijuana legal, and so I think we owe some respect to them to take some deliberation and time before we take action either way. I just know that before I can vote on anything, I was going to vote nothing tonight, I was going to abstain, because I don't have enough information to make what I consider a learned and informed decision. So I would like to have the six-month moratorium while the council gets people in front of us in study sessions to give us factual information, and where it has been implemented, and what the issues have been with it. That's my position.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. You know, I am torn, but I'm not torn on this issue, and I don't even think it's about how I feel about the vote, or, you know, the, it's not my personal feelings about this issue, it's about how it affects our city. Even though it's legal to develop and process and sell marijuana, recreational marijuana now in the state, it doesn't mean that the city necessarily has to have it within our jurisdiction. We have the choice to decide not to do that or to do it if we want to. Part of the reason that, or part of my thinking on this is that when voters voted for, when a lot of voters who voted for this, let me start over, a lot of the voters who voted for this did so because they thought that a large portion of the taxes from this industry would be coming back to the cities that was, that were selling the marijuana. And we're finding, we have found that that is not the case. So not only are we not benefiting economically from the sale within the city, at least not significantly, we're also, we, I, we, it's possible that there would be an increased crime rate, because this is a cash-only business, and there could be increased robberies. And I think that's something that we need to look at. The other part of this, I did a lot of research myself, and, you know, some people are connecting the medical with the recreational, and I don't have my notes, here they are. Anyway, long story short, is that the legislature says that the medical marijuana, having that available to the community, is not affected at all by I-502. So there's really no relationship there, and we can decide on these things independently. So that's kind of it. I, I'm actually still kind of on the fence about this, but I'm actually leaning toward voting for the ban tonight.
Okay. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Burbridge, did you have a...
Nope.
Councilmember Rosowski.
No, after you.
All right, Deputy Mayor Burbridge.
Okay. Thank you. I certainly would respond by saying that my colleagues, who expressed their thoughts, have each presented some very important ideas and concerns. And I would add that this is a major change in the way our country is looking at marijuana, having two states so far voting to allow legalization. This is a major change, and with really wide-ranging implications. And as has been stated by some of my colleagues, while our staff has done work on this over a period of time, and it was presented to the Planning Commission, who did some deliberation, the full council has not had the opportunity to do a really thorough analysis and go through a very significant decision-making process that I believe this decision warrants. So my tendency at this point would be to support the motion that has been put forward.
Councilmember Rosowski and Councilmember...
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, and thank you, Deputy Mayor. You know, we put a moratorium on this a year ago, just about a year ago, and we've had a year to look at this. And during that time, really, the entire marijuana industry has developed, and we know that our state has put a lot of effort into this. With regard to us here in the city, we, I think we have given citizens an opportunity to speak. We've had a public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting, we've had an opportunity at the Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting, we've had an opportunity here tonight for citizens to come and speak at public comment, and there hasn't been an overwhelming, at least from what I see, desire of people to come and talk about it. So I think we've given adequate opportunity for that forum for our citizens. Anyway, if we, I think if we continue to push this, we're in effect kicking the can down the road, and we need to come to grips with really what we're going to do here. We have had a long time to study this, and we have Planning Commission material that has been available for us to study. So I think, anyway, I've said my piece, I think everybody knows where I stand on this issue, and I'll stop for now. Thank you.
Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Raffi Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, am struggling with this, because like my colleague said, the citizens have voted for it. However, I've been reading a lot of material on what's going on in Denver, and so I do appreciate the additional time, the moratorium, because what I'm reading, as you read further, you get more information and you're digging more. And so there's a lot of information out there that we really need to decipher and understand. And so I do support the moratorium, just to give us more time. It may not be the whole six months, but, and again, I would like, also like to talk to people, experts, and see what they can add, what value, and how I can understand this better before we make this, because it's a strong decision to make for our city, and it's important that we do an educated, we make an educated decision on this. So I do support the moratorium, so I could understand it and read it further.
Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Raffi Dawson.
Thanks. I just want to state that I was thinking the same thing that Councilmember Rosowski was said about, it's already been a year, we've explored it, we have given the community an opportunity to come and speak about it on both sides. The other thing I'd throw out there is that we can always change our minds. I mean, it's not like, you know, if we decide to ban it now, and we find out that later we get the tax revenues, if the state decides to start sharing that money, we can go back to, we can open it up again for discussion. To me, it's kind of about a quality of life, the type of lifestyle that we want here in our city, and it's, I'll just be out there with it. I grew up in a family with a lot of drugs, and it affected my family significantly. And as Cheryl Nevers said, you know, when you have family members that use marijuana as a gateway to other drugs, you find that these talking points from people who are for this don't really resonate. And so as much as I'm keeping that part of this separate, it also is about the lifestyle of the community. And if we continue to go down this path and have that element here in terms of, in terms of just the opportunity for, say, parents to get it and have it in the household, even though, I know, I understand, a lot of times it's going to be there anyway, but it's going to be harder, if it's not in the general location, for parents to have it where children can maybe get a hold of it. So for those reasons, so the taxes, the lifestyle, and just our community in general, those are the reasons I think I've just decided to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duclon, and then more.
First of all, the council as a whole has not had the chance to hear all of the information and to discuss it, and I think we're just asking for another moratorium, which means it's not going to, nothing is going to take place out there in the community. We're not sanctioning anything out there. not sanctioning anything out there. It gives the whole council as a time to look at it. It also gives us a time to work with Olympia, because in terms of the funding that goes to the cities, and I have a hunch there'll be a lot of cities down there, and I think this city, whether we do marijuana or not, should be down there demanding that the cities get the bulk of the revenue, the sales tax from it, rather than people in Olympia who don't do anything and don't have to deal with the issues. So I think that's something that we can do. But, you know, I grew up with alcoholism in my family, and I'll tell you right now, I suffered for that, from that for quite a while, but then I decided I wanted to get my life straightened out. It depends upon individuals a lot, what you do and what you make of your life. And some will never make up anything of their life, they'll get into alcohol, they'll get into something. Others may try it and will be just fine. And we can't control what everybody does out there. And all I want is a little more time to have, for us as a council, to have the information that was presented to the committee, and other information from people in the community that really want to come and talk to us as councilmembers, so that I can make more of an informed decision. I also cannot disregard the fact that fifty-three percent of Federal Way voted for legalizing marijuana. And I am here to serve the people of Federal Way, and sometimes that means serving their wishes, even though I may disagree with that. So I just would like to have this moratorium, so that I can get more information and the rest of us can too. And I don't see that that hurts anybody, because it keeps the status quo. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Well, Councilmember DuKlo said everything eloquently. I will definitely vote in favor of this moratorium. Clearly, there needs to be more time discussed, but I will say that this is the last time I will vote in favor of a moratorium. I think at some point, we as a city need to move forward, and I will reiterate some of the points that have already been made, and that as an elected official representing ninety thousand residents here in Federal Way, and when those ninety thousand residents have spoken up with fifty-three percent, I can't in good conscience go against them. It's our job to listen, and it's our job to work within the means that the people of Federal Way have given us. And that's what our job is, that's what our job is as local elected officials, and that's why we have to team up with county and the state, in making sure this works out for the best. My second point, as Councilmember DuKlo stated, the state is going to be discussing funding, and there is a hu, there's an opportunity in the future for cities to advocate for restoring local funding that we used to get from the liquor and tax. And so I would hate for us to miss out on an opportunity, because we have banned marijuana recreational sales. I would hate to lose out on an opportunity for us to get local funding from that. So tonight, I will vote in favor of the moratorium, but again, I encourage for us, for this to be the last moratorium, and for us to move forward after that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. This was-
Oh, I'm sorry, if I could interrupt.
Of course.
Amy Jo Pierce, I'll say the attorney. Sorry, Councilmember-
With your permission, I'd like to pass out what this version would look like, since this wasn't in your packet, this is a new, a motion for something that just hasn't existed yet. And so I'd like to pass this out, so that council can review what Councilmember Honda is proposing.
The six-month moratorium?
That's correct. The extension of the moratorium for all types of marijuana businesses.
Okay.
Because it also includes medical marijuana?
Sorry?
It includes item seven B.
Yes. Okay, all right. Councilmember Honda, go ahead.
This has been a struggle for me, because I certainly don't encourage anyone to use marijuana, just because I, I've never used it, I don't know what it's like to use it, I've not read good things about it, people who have, oh, I forgot to take one for myself.
Yes.
That's what happens when you talk, until I do two things at once. But I also believe that our voters voted for this, and I just want to make sure that as a council, we've had enough time to study this, to listen to the public. And as a matter of fact, on October 3rd, our financial director sent us some information about what would happen with the money raised for marijuana sales in Federal Way. I'd like the public to see that kind of information. Our police chief also responded to an email I had asked, sent him and asked how our police would respond to potential issues. This is cash business. What would be the concerns and the potential issues? How would the police department respond? You know, it's a little bit more complex than just opening a store and selling the product. We have to be ready, we have to do it right, if we're gonna do it, and we just need more time to study it. So I thank those who have supported this so far.
All right, thank you. And I'll ask my chief of staff, our chief of staff, Brian Wilson, to, let's discuss perhaps tomorrow, the information that was referenced by our finance director and our police chief about how and we can disseminate that information, and make that available, in regard to possible law enforcement contact. Excuse me, you know, possible law enforcement, you know, results, and the financial ramifications. So those were generated from questions internally by the council, and then that information was shared with the council, but we'll discuss dissemination based on the council member's request. Okay? Is there any further discussion? All right. There was a motion and a second in favor of a six-month moratorium. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
All right. Would the clerk please take a roll?
Deputy Mayor Burridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Seppa Dawson?
Aye.
Councilmember Maloney?
Nay.
Councilmember Honda?
Aye.
Councilmember Rosowski?
Nay.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember DuKlo?
Aye.
Motion passes five-two.
All right. Ms. Pierceall?
So the results of this vote has, it leads to some interesting issues that we need to discuss. So first of all, it's, at this point, it's just a motion, and you've expressed your intent, and we can follow through with that, but a couple things have to happen. First, we still need to suspend the rule, the council bill title needs to be read into the record, and we need to do that process. But it's important to note that at this stage, without it being unanimous vote, this extension of the moratorium would not take effect until after the current moratorium expires, because the current moratorium is going to expire on November 5th. For this moratorium to be effective within, before that time, it needs a unanimous vote, as there is a finding in that ordinance, the proposed ordinance that was just passed around, that it be for the public health and safety. So it's important that if we don't have a gap in that time period from where the moratorium ends on November 5th, and the extension ordinance takes effect, that it be unanimous, or we have some other stopgap in place. So it is, it is a bit of a conundrum, but-
All right, so the, as a result of its non-unanimity, the current moratorium expires on November 5th?
That's correct.
So when would, would it be November 7th? Well, actually, when would our-
So the current ordinance as drafted-
Yes.
Requires unanimity to be effective before thirty days-
Okay.
From publication. So this current, without unanimity, it would not take effect until thirty days from when it's published, and I don't know what day that is, but, on Friday. So it wouldn't be until the, much later in November that this ordinance would take effect.
So later in November?
That's correct.
The 24th, so there would essentially be nineteen days. What are the legal ramifications, I mean, without getting too far down that path in regard to giving legal advice?
During that period, we will not have any marijuana regulations, and someone could apply. And we do have code sections that say that we can deny a business license if it doesn't meet federal law. So there is a possibility that we could stop those, but it's not as strong as having the moratorium in place. So I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't warn you of that chance.
Okay. Anthony Marietta has expressed an interest in addressing this matter right now, and if I, thank you very much. Anthony, go ahead.
So may I make a point of order?
Yes.
So obviously, your intent is to-
Well, you're actually not in a position to make a point of order, but you're certainly welcome to make a-
Point of interest, how's that?
You're welcome to make a point.
We kind of went through this at the very end of last year, where obviously, the council has spoken five to two. I do appreciate the two people who have voted in, against this motion, but if your intent would be to satisfy a continuation of that moratorium, not have the gap so that somebody then sneaks in between, one of the individuals who had voted in favor of the motion can ask to revisit this issue. Do you bring it back up? I would implore the other two to vote in favor of the motion, making the continuation, it satisfies your legal requirements and you're back to book.
Well, luckily, because we haven't done the right process yet, we still have, we have a second chance at it already. So if someone wants to move to suspend the rules-
Thank you, Anthony.
And then someone wants to move the proposed ordinance, we can vote again, because we didn't-
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay.
And just for clarification for the record, that's council rule 2.28, to allow first reading and enactment of the ordinance in the same meeting, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
But can we have a conversation?
Absolutely.
What are we voting on?
Are you supportive of this?
This is a motion to suspend the rules. Amy Jo, a question was asked, what are we voting on?
That's correct. This, right now, is a motion to suspend the rules to allow first reading enactment of this ordinance in one meeting. And it's been seconded, so-
I am supportive of this, because it's gonna happen anyway, so we might as well have it, you know, not have any gaps.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, to have first and second reading and enactment. And so, without going to the main motion, but whether we suspend the rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that passes.
Can I move approval of the proposed ordinance?
Actually, have we, I'm sorry, has the city clerk read the ordinance title? Would you please do so?
I will.
Council Bill 658, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, renewing the moratorium imposed by ordinance 13-749 on marijuana collective gardens and other related activities involved in the sale, manufacturing, or distribution of marijuana for six months.
All right, thank you very much. And Councilmember Honda?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
Okay, and that is the six-month moratorium, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosowski?
I cannot in good conscience vote for this motion.
All right, is there any other further discussion on that point?
May I ask our legal counsel what that means?
Yeah, actually, Amy Jo, go ahead. Ms. Pierceall, what are the legal ramifications of a non-unanimous vote?
If it's not unanimous, then the emergency section in that ordinance will not be considered valid, and we do not have an exception to the ordinance not being subject to the referendum rules, which means it wouldn't be effective for thirty days.
Okay. And Councilmember, Councilmember Moore, and then Councilmember, Councilmember DuKlo. All right, sorry, you had your, Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you. I just want to, you know, say again, that is, it does go against my conscience as well, but I think that we are, we have less risk or less liability of someone applying during that timeframe if we, if we go ahead and enact it, the ordinance at this date. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that's why I would switch my vote for this reason only.
Councilmember Moore?
Just for clarification, so if this does not pass, that means it's gonna be a window of time where businesses can apply. Is that right?
That is correct, they could apply. Again, we have the ability to deny the license based on code language, but it's, it could be up to challenge.
Okay. Counselors, any further questions? Councilmember Honda?
I'll answer.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of the main motion to, in favor of the six-month moratorium, please say yes.
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Stephanie, Ms. Courtney?
Deputy Mayor Burridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Seppa Dawson?
Aye.
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Councilmember Honda?
Aye.
Councilmember Rosowski?
Nay.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember DuKlo?
Aye.
Motion passes six-one.
All right, except it does not have the emergency as a result of non-unanimity. All right, just make sure the record's clear. Council Bill 658, ordinance to extend moratorium on medical marijuana.
So-
The attorney, Pierceall?
Yeah, so basically, this council bill was substituted in for that council bill. So you still have pending before you 657, which is the ban. We've passed the 658, the new version of 658, which is a moratorium for six months, covering all marijuana activity, collective gardens and any others. The 658 that was in your packet was only for collective gardens, it was only covering the medical marijuana. So if there's still an interest in that, it would need to be renumbered 659.
I've already taken care of that, I'm sorry.
Well, except that it's only for, you've taken care of it, except that it won't be in effect for thirty days.
Is there a motion? So 659, what is item B on the ordinances, first reading and enactment, is to extend the moratorium on medical marijuana?
Correct, but it was included in the one that you just passed. It was, it was a package deal in the version that was just passed. So because the original recommendation, or what was brought forward to you, again, was a 657, which was the ban-
Right.
On just the recreation, and then 65, the old 658, the one that's in your packet, was just gonna address-
So you combined it?
Medical marijuana.
Okay.
Yes. And so those have been combined, so.
All right. So essentially, item B, unless we wanted to address this, I don't know if there's a, is there a motion regarding item B for enactment of 659? Okay, for failure of a motion, it will die. Is that, all right. Councilmember Maloney?
So then it would fall under the same thing as the other one, there'd be that window where someone could apply?
Correct. And again, we would deny based on our code.
Okay, but it's still, someone could still fight that easier, you're saying? Okay.
So that'd be thirty days from today's, from Friday's date, which is the 24th, which is November 24th?
Yes, I'll do additional research to make sure there aren't any other exceptions or any other way to get it before thirty days.
Okay.
But that's my current understanding of our code.
And Ms. Pierceall, by lack of a motion or a second, 659 will just die of a-
That's fine, yes, it will.
All right. All right, that's all the business we have in regard to ordinances. Council reports, Councilmember Seppa Dawson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to talk about Weiskir Hunger, which is happening October 31st. And I'm proud to say that our students, our youth, have been very active in doing this, this is their third year, and their goal this year is to raise fifteen thousand pounds of canned goods and stuff. So please, if you can support them, it would be great. They are gonna have their, they're gonna launch their event at the, on the 31st at six o'clock at the Town Square. So please go support them, and if they knock on your doors, please don't close your door on them, and hopefully, they will get, meet their goals. I think this is a great event for our community, and again, having the youth spearhead and run this is fabulous. My two sons were involved in this the last two years, and I'm proud of the effort, and I would love to see people support them and help them raise the needed amount and meet their goals, so.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you. So this past weekend, I toured, or I attended the Historical Society's annual meeting, which was really interesting, and it was at the Brook Lake property where we got this wonderful painting, historical painting. And I just want to commend the Historical Society for all they do for our community. I, as was mentioned earlier, I attended the press conference with King County Executive Dow Constantine and Pete Von Reitbauer at the Department of Health, and I'm just so excited that that is going to remain open, at least for the next two years. I've been working on the college initiative a little bit with the mayor, and that is rolling along as, to some degree, is the rebranding, so I'm excited about those initiatives continuing to work, go forward. On the rebranding, we had some notebooks out- the rebranding, we had some notebooks out in the community over the past couple of months. Thank you, Lydia, for helping with those, and, uh, again, further thank you to Susan and Deeny for helping with the rebranding in the past. Um, a staff member will be taking over that initiative now, but, um, I had the good fortune of picking up those notebooks that we had left out in the community for people to write their perceptions about the city in, and, um, really enjoyed reading some of the, um, the comments, and we'll be putting those out to, um, for the public at some point, for the public to see, but it was nice to get the, um, involvement from the community on that. Um, let's see, a couple weeks ago, or maybe it was just last week, attended the, um, Pete Von Reitbauer's Good Eggs Breakfast, and Adam Smith, Congressman Adam Smith, Smith spoke. Um, and the last thing was, um, Dave Larson, Judge Dave Larson, mentioned at our last council meeting that he was holding, um, an event for, um, uh, to educate the community on domestic violence, um, and, uh, she, it was called In Her Shoes. It was a great event. I learned a lot at that, um, event, and I wanna thank him for putting that together for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Honda?
Thank you very much. So all youth in Federal Way, we're still looking for youth commissioners. We have seven applicants, and we are looking for twelve to fifteen. The applications are open until October thirty-first, so please, if you're interested, talk to any one of us, call the city, and ask for information, or go online, because you could read about it online on the city's webpage. We are looking for students who live within the city boundaries and are juniors and sophomores currently in school. So please, um, this is an important commission. We, it's one of several commissions that we have here in the city, and we would like you to join our commission. This is the last Saturday of the farm, Outdoor Farmers Market, and there's going to be a pet spooktacular. It will have some contests for pets. Owner look-alike, best costume, best trick. It starts at eleven o'clock at the Farmers Market, which is in the Sears parking lot. On November fourteenth, for the third year, the Farmers Market will move inside the mall until after the holidays, and it will be in the food court. This Saturday is also the Zombie Run. It's the last race of the Federal Way Cup. It also starts at eleven AM, and, uh, we went there last year. Of course, I didn't run. Bruce took pictures, but, you know, I don't run, and it was really cool. People come dressed in costumes. There's zombies in the woods, ready to grab people. It's, it was really busy. There were a lot of people there, and it was a lot of fun. So if you're interested, uh, please, you can go on our webpage and find more information about that, but it, it looked like, if you're into that, it was a lot of fun, so I would encourage you to do that. Get involved. Um, the, the Rota Dendron Gardens are having a fall event where there's free admission, and you can go in and buy plants. You can walk around the garden, see the fall color. I was there Sunday. It was the only day of the year the dogs are allowed there, and there was a dog contest, which I got to judge, which is very interesting. Uh, there are people from all over Western Washington there, actually, so it was pretty interesting. Um, and it, it's, the gardens are beautiful any time of the year, but they're really pretty in the fall, too, so.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Selsky?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to start by saying thanks, thank you to the hundreds of multi-service center supporters who were at the MSC Helps luncheon last Wednesday, among, uh, also with some of the council and the mayor. It was the first, um, annual luncheon for the MSC to raise funds, and, uh, it was just great to see so many people there who were involved and excited to be there to help raise these funds. The MSC raised almost forty-three-hundred-thousand dollars, which is a, a, a large chunk of money, and this, of course, is this, another annual event that they have along with Crab Feed, which occurs in June. But what I'm really interested in and particularly happy about is the veterans housing that the MSC is going to start providing, and I think this goes way back to council member DuKlo's days, the beginnings of the planning for this. But anyway, it's soon to be under development, and I'm very happy that, uh, the MSC will be involved in housing our veterans. And then, um, this past weekend was, was kind of a busy weekend. There were a lot of things going on, the, um, with the, uh, Historical Society event, and at the same time, there was an event at Federal Way High School, which I went to as an alumni, and it was the last tour that the school is going to give to alumni before it get, it gets torn down and rebuilt, and this'll happen starting in January. So there were about eight hundred people there. It was, it was really packed, and it was good to see a lot of alumni. And, uh, this past week as well, the, uh, as I mentioned, it was a proud time for the Eagles because the Eagles had their homecoming, and they, um, I should probably put it lightly, that the Eagles ran over Mount Rainier at that game, and it was, uh, it was exciting to be there. So, and as always, I wanna say thanks to my classmate Bruce Honda. He's not here tonight, unfortunately, for me to give him this, uh, this, uh, thank you, but he did a lot of work to try to pull together that tour, and, uh, Bruce is, I always call him the spirit of our class, and now he's really kind of the spirit of the school, so, uh, he's really involved, and I'm really proud how, how he works so hard to get, uh, to get things going for the Eagles. Lastly, the ne, the next Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting is Monday, November third, at five-thirty here in council chambers, and that's it.
Thank you. Uh, council member Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Multi-Service Center Helps luncheon, uh, along with some of my colleagues here. Uh, a lot of incredible stories that need to be heard, not just in Federal Way, but statewide, uh, and so certainly looked, uh, I, uh, enjoyed learning, uh, from, uh, the presentations and from the stories that were shared. Uh, also, last Monday, I attended, I attended the Diversity Commission, book drives, uh, where they have, uh, readers come in and read to the, uh, schoolchildren, and that was a lot of fun, reading. Uh, one of the books I read was I Like Myself. Uh, lots of life lessons that can be learned in that, uh, one little, uh, book, uh, that we all could take a page from, I'm sure. Um, and also, along with some of my colleagues, I attended the Historical Society's annual meeting on Saturday. Uh, unfortunately, I couldn't stay for a long period of time, but it was just, uh, uh, it was wonderful to be with everybody and, uh, meet some new friends, uh, and be able to be there to support the Historical Society. Like, uh, council member Maloney stated, uh, it is an important group, uh, that, uh, it's an important group here in Federal Way, and we all, uh, it's, it's incredible what they do. It's incredible how much knowledge they have, uh, on the Historical Society, and I just, uh, I always get eager learning as much as I can from that group. Uh, and just wanna say, uh, thank you to, to my colleagues again for an important discussion. If it's one thing that I appreciate, uh, about this council is the fact that we're able to have thoughtful conversations. Some may be difficult, but yet we still walk away respecting one another, and that's something that I thoroughly enjoy, and just wanna say thank you for the conversation that we had on I-502.
Council member DuKlo?
Um, well, I too was at the MSC luncheon in picture only, but I was on two chairs. Uh, I have a thing about when I, when I retire from something, I like it, I like to stay separate, but still supporting it quietly behind the scenes. But I know somebody posted my picture there, so. Uh, I just wanna talk a little bit about the, uh, public health issue. As, as most of you know, Federal Way stepped up, uh, uh, because of the mayor's interaction with the county exec to save our, our clinic. One other city did the same thing, um, Green, Greenbridge. Um, unfortunately, um, Auburn and North Shore Centers are still slated to close, along with Auburn's Seattle, uh, Satellite Centers on the Muckleshoot Reservation in Inhamclaw, and this, this is an area of, of a lot of poverty, and it really makes me sad that they weren't able to work something out, and I hope that the county council does something about fixing this issue, because they do have a duty to serve King County people, and, um, and not expect the cities to pick up everything. So again, I wanna thank the mayor for his efforts on that, and thank the council for voting to spend some money this year to give us a chance to work for a better solution next, next year. Um, the other thing is the, uh, county's executive, the county executive's twenty-fifteen-twenty-six proposed budget came out, and what would be a meeting without a report on solid waste? So, the good news is, and I'll read this, due to a mix of savings, including refinancing of bonds at favorable rates, operational savings, which is really important, conversions of bond anticipation notes to long-term debt and other undertakings, the solid waste division has able to extend the existing rate through the end of twenty-fifteen-twenty-sixteen biennium. That means there's no increase to our ratepayers. So I wanna congratulate them and the committees that have worked on this for, for coming up with this solution. So that, that's really good. Uh, let's see. The other thing is, uh, I was asked to speak at Mitchell Place last Wednesday to the senior residents and some other members of the community, uh, and Mayor Farrell and Deputy Mayor Burbidge were also in attendance, and, um, they asked me to speak about my book, so I did, and that was kind of a fun, fun evening, and we all had a good time.
And what's the name of your book?
Uh, Danger from Fifty Feet Below, and it's still available for sale. And, uh, finally, the, what?
Where?
Huh?
Where?
Oh, you can get it on amazon.com, or you can go to any bookstore and, and ask them to order it for you. Thank you so much for the plug. Oh, and finally, the next meeting of the Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, at four-thirty PM in the High LeBos Meeting Room.
Thank you, Deeny. And I think I'm, I'm pretty confident saying, had it, had it not been for you, there likely would not be a multi-service center now, so we appreciate your, you know, was it sixteen years?
Yes.
Uh, just of absolute service to this community.
Well, thank you very much. It, it's a very important organization, but I tell you, when I first came here, I had a lot of meetings with a lot of elected officials, and they weren't pleasant. It, it did not have the best reputation in town, but it's an outstanding organization, has great people working there and a wonderful executive director, CEO, so...
Yeah, she's great. All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Burbidge?
Thank you very much. Uh, the next meeting of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will be Thursday, November thirteenth, at eight o'clock in the morning. Uh, this morning, I was able to attend a meeting of the South County Area Transportation Board at Sea-Tac City Hall, and, uh, the main focus of the meeting was really, um, a presentation and discussion with, uh, the state majority floor leader, Senator Joe Fane, and Majority Leader, uh, uh, State Representative Pat Sullivan, and they presented their perspectives on, uh, the importance of transportation funding for all of us for the future, and also the, um, their perspectives on the likelihood of, of transportation funding in this year. Um, and I'll be able to, to share more details informally, uh, in the near future on that. Um, there are a couple of, of, of events coming up soon, uh, in the community that haven't been mentioned. One is this weekend, on Sunday, uh, October twenty-sixth, at two o'clock PM, the, our local barbershop-style Harmony Kings and the Jet Cities Chorus will be presenting a free concert at St. Luke's Church on South Three-Twelfth, and you can come and enjoy an afternoon of a cappella entertainment by these choruses. That'll be outstanding. And then, of course, we have, coming up November first, Saturday, uh, the outstanding event, Shindig, uh, to celebrate and benefit the Plan Performing Arts and Conference Center, and that will occur at the Twin Lakes Golf and Country Club, again, that Saturday, November first, at seven-thirty PM. Doors open at six-forty-five. Hope to see you there.
All right, thank you. And, uh, council, thank you for a, a great meeting, good discussion, members of the community who came. Anthony Marietta, thank you very much for your assistance this evening, and with that, we are adjourned.